All right, at this time I would like to call the order of the meeting of the Hardin County Board of Education. And first of all, if you stand and we'll say the place of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Board commitments, Don, you got them?
I'm ready. To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Schools Board Team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. And Mr. John Wright's going to do some recognitions and...
Yes, sir. Our HCS Stronger Together Award winners this month, all very deserving, and you'll see why here in just a second after you pass the resolution, Mr. Chair.
All right, do I have a motion on the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, second by a second, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'm going to first, Joseph and Zach, come on up here, guys. I'm going to show a video that goes along with these gentlemen. So, I just wanted to present them their awards. So, this is Joseph and Zach. Joseph Spence III.
I was told to emphasize, say, the third.
Yeah. Zach Sheed. So, both of these young men are North Hardin High School seniors and members of the North Hardin JRR OTC program, represented themselves and their peers as they recognized the legacy of longtime North Hardin JRR OTC instructor Sergeant Major Paul Gray. Sergeant Major Gray led the program from 1993 until 2011. He passed in 2014 after a hard battle with brain cancer. Joseph and Zach heard countless stories about the class, professionalism, and dignity that Sergeant Major instilled in the program. So, these two young men took it upon themselves to go to Sergeant Major Gray's grave and thank him for his contributions. Hardin County Schools admires these young men for respecting the great contributions of the past while leading today's cadets into the future. So, I'm going to play that video. Hold on just one second. I want you all to see this.
That's where I am right now, Sergeant Major Paul Gray. It is, um, it's tombstone, I guess this is. And you can really feel him living through us right now. He's a big inspiration here at the program, and just feels good pay our respects to him a day before Veterans Day. So, thank you Sergeant Major Paul Gray for everything you've done for us. And from the church battalion, we know you guys are screaming, "We love you Sergeant Paul Gray." So, we're just here doing it for you guys. We've been able to come out here at this beautiful day, look at all these veterans out here, let you guys remember that nothing is ever free. Line of the free, home of the brave, that's who we are.
Thank you, guys.
A North Hardin smile.
Next, we'd like to have Ms. Consuelo Merle. Bring her in. So, she and Stephanie Hack both work in the front office at Vine Grove Elementary School. Ms. Hack cannot be here tonight, but Ms. Merle is here, and I'm going to read you what Ms. Cockrell, the Vine Grove Elementary School principal, had to say about Ms. Hack and Ms. Merle, that she shared during the course of preparing for a very different school year, that they both have worked long hours, sometimes well into the evening, measuring distance between desks to ensure that they were six feet apart, creating seating charts, tracking attendance, and distributing materials as needed for classrooms to be safe and clean, well beyond their front office duties. They continue to work hard every day, even since NTI started. They often stay late to hand out Chromebooks so families can be prepared for instruction the next day. They never tell anyone no because they are always willing to do what's best for students, staff, and parents. They have called students to help with homework, had one-on-one Google meets with mentor students, and even completed home visits to surprise students or help them with their work, well beyond the scope of what we pay them today. So, thank you, Ms. Merle, we appreciate you. All right, Ms. McCamish, come on up here, Ms. McCamish. So, this is Ms. Diane McCamish. She is representing the Hardin County Extension Homemakers. They combined their talents to make more than 1,100 masks, and they brought more today. They first brought 1,100, but they brought a lot more today. They made masks for elementary and middle school students to use when students come back to school, and that's going to happen someday soon. HCS put out the call in our community asking anyone who could sew to help make masks. So, we provided the material and the elastic and the pattern. Well, many ladies and gentlemen from across the county went to work with one common goal, and it was to keep students safe. But when HCS put out the call, Ms. McCamish reached out to us to ask how the homemakers could help. Well, that was, what a true, that was a wonderful, wonderful day. So, we gave them lots of material and lots of elastic, and they went to work in a big way. So, Ms. McCamish even laundered the mask and pressed each one before bringing them to our office. HCS appreciates all the hard work from the homemakers, and Ms. Dana Fentress from the UK Extension Office for her guidance. So, thank you, Ms. McCamish. All right, thank you, Ms. McCamish.
Recognition of visitors, anyone sign up, John, to speak?
No, sir. Nobody's signed up.
Mr. Steve Bland is with us tonight. He's going to be a new board member starting next year, so I assume welcome aboard. Construction updates, we had a new meeting with architects and...
Focus on academics.
Yeah, we get focused on academics.
Pass right over, Mr. Sutton, about that.
Yeah.
You know, that's the way it goes. Come on up here, Mr. Sutton.
All right. Thank you all for allowing me to present tonight. I want to talk about our teachers right now and the great job they're doing, our instructional assistants, bus drivers, instructional assistants, bus drivers, along with the cafeteria staff. I just want to say everything that everybody's doing to make this a success, central office workers as well. Comparing NTI from March to now, I've seen a lot of growth. I've seen a lot of good live instruction attempted by our teachers, a lot of co-teaching models going on. So, I want you to know the effort is tremendous by our staff. So, what I want to start out with tonight, before we move on to what I want to introduce tonight, was probably, I don't know, Ms. Morgan, you may give me a better timeframe here, sometime last year, we started talking about hiring some grant writers for the district. And she said, "I'd like for you to post this position and hire this position." And she said, "I just have one request." And I said, "Okay, what's that?" And she said, "Don't mess this up." So, and that was, she said, "This is very important." She said that, and we posted the position, looked at our different people that applied, and we did, we had our interviews. And I came back to Ms. Morgan, she said, "Who would you like to hire for this position?" I said, "I'd like to hire Ruthie Miller, I'd like to hire Susan Ryan." She goes, "That's two people." And I said, "Yes, you're right." And I said, "But in order for us to really have the impact that I think we can have with these positions, these two people working together simultaneously will pay for themselves 10 times over, and they will impact learning in our district, and they will impact programs in our district." So, this has been a long time coming, but I want you all to see what these two have been able to accomplish in the short time they've been in this district. So, I'm going to call Ruthie Miller and Susan Ryan, and I think we did a good job and hired the right people. They're doing a great job, so I'm going to call them up, talk to you all tonight. So, come on up. Thank you all for being here.
Do I need to stand right here? Can I stand over here to the side? Because I'm sure...
You can stand wherever you want. As long as you are six foot away from anyone, you are the great.
Yeah, it would probably be best right here if you were at the podium.
I apologize, Ruthie.
I'm sorry, I'm blocking your all the due back there. Hi, I'm Ruthie Miller, and I'm a former Hardin County teacher, been in the district for over 30 years, and so now I'm grant writing. It's kind of a passion of mine, I call it a hobby, actually, because you have to kind of, I don't know, have a creativity and enjoy what you're doing when you're writing. But, so I've been a grant writer, and here is my partner, and she is awesome. Susan Ryan.
So, my name is Susan Ryan, and my background is in elementary and then also career tech ed, gifted education, and a little bit of assessments. So, I think Ruthie and I make a great pair. We really enjoy working together, and we're grateful for the, that you hired both of us. So, we're going to go over a few things tonight. We're going to show you some grants that we have received, but before I get into that, I'd like to talk just for a second about when we apply for grants and things that we commonly see. First of all, our job is to find basically what grantors want to know, is what problem do you have, and how can we fix your problem? And so, it's our job to truly understand what they want to fund and how they want us to go about fulfilling that. Because whenever Superintendent Morgan signs off on that assurances document, we're saying that we're going to do what we're saying, what we say we're going to do to get that grant money. One thing, I think, just a bit of education for a lot of people that we work with that maybe have never applied for a grant, teachers, principals, we talk to them about how most grant funds are not for supplanting. So, if you have something that's being paid for already in your district, almost all grants will say, "We don't want to come in and pay for something that you're already providing. We want to provide for new things that are unavailable to your students." Obviously, some hot topics out there, a lot of grantors want to see hands-on learning, they like STEM, they want to see community involvement, and they like to know that they're meeting the needs of a diverse group of students. So, we're going to go ahead and talk a little bit about a few of the grants we've got. We're not going to talk about all of them, but we've tried to hit several different areas in our school district. So, the first one, we're going to talk about some that have influenced child nutrition. We received three grants this year for child nutrition in the area of equipment assistance. And so, we provided warmers and also combi ovens. So, some of the equipment that we replaced was over 20 years old, and so that was a super important thing. And also, it made our equipment be able to be mobile and reach more students. So, that was equipment assistance. Summer feeding, you may not, a lot of people may not have thought about what was the impact of summer feeding when COVID hit. Well, immediately, all of our meals had to be packaged and had to be things that were COVID-free, you know, safe and secure for students and easy to grab. And so, that's a lot of styrofoam, you know, not things that we normally and typically have in our budget. And so, Dow Corning jumped in and really helped us with that, and we are very grateful.
We also received a grant from KDE for fresh fruits and vegetables. As a former PE teacher, I really feel like that was really important, and so we hit our top three schools for free and reduced lunch. So, every day, they receive a fresh fruit in the morning, and in the afternoon, a fresh vegetable from that grant.
Another grant we received, you may have heard about three different family readiness events that happened for preschool families. And so, the families came, they were connected to community resources, they built relationships with school personnel, and then each of the children got to take home a get-ready backpack. And that happened in different locations in the county, out in the community.
We also applied for a grant from KDE for a visual arts program at Lincoln Trail. The topic was Kentucky culture. They are making cardboard dulcimers, learning about rhythm, they're making, taking a look at nature in their visual arts program, so they're implementing that this year.
This was a fun one to write, this was real robots. And, you know, there's, so, we talked about supplanting. What they, what grants will allow you to do is to expand sometimes things you're doing, and that's what we did here. At GCB, they had VEX robotics, but only about 10, only 10 students were able to build those robots because robotic equipment is so expensive.
Very expensive, yeah.
This grant put in $15,000 just of our robotics equipment.
It's about $3,000 a robot.
Yes. It's expensive. So, we bought some VEXs, we had some other equipment that the ratio of student to equipment was pretty high, and so we were able to lower that ratio. And then the very cool thing was some screen-through robots that we provided for first and second K students, and that was very cool, so.
We also wrote and received a 21st Century Learning Grant through KDE, $675,000 for five years, and this helped Radcliffe Elementary with academics, enrichment, homework help, and... Anyway, so we targeted an after-school program, and it's running right now, and it's running very successfully. We're writing, also, we're writing right now one for Lakewood Elementary and one for Woodman.
Ruthie, can I ask, would you say the grant amount again on that particular grant is how much?
$675,000.
Wow. That's what I thought I understood, that's a right sizable grant.
It is.
And we're both working on one right now, so...
That's $675,000 throughout the five.
Over a five-year period.
Great.
That's the sort of thing you'd notice. Wow.
We also wrote for the Excel program called Heals Together. It's a women and children's initiative for the teen pregnant girls at College View, and we were one of the finalists, and we were awarded the award just a few weeks ago. So, that's really helpful for those girls who, at this time, are in the Excel program. We've partnered with Once Upon a Child, and that organization here in Lizbethown is providing bottles, diapers, breast pumps, anything that the girls need. They contact Ms. Tucker and really have been a great help.
And Ruthie, as I understand it, we're also able to do classes before they actually deliver the baby. Before, it was after.
Only after.
After the fact, but this allows some classes. Ms. Tucker has just been phenomenal with this program. Did a great job following Ms. Buchanan, and so they get that assistance before Beau Cannon. Sorry, I knew that wasn't right, Beau Cannon, but they, it's a tremendous jumpstart to that program.
The data has shown that due to COVID, we are going to have more children, more teens in that situation. So, being proactive and using that grant money to aid in the program is going to be, you know, really helpful.
A lot of the grants we write for, some of them are pretty competitive. This was a very competitive one, of course, the 21st Century Grant, a lot of these. We really haven't talked about the number given in the state, but like the GCB STEM Grant, we were one of four awardees in the state. There weren't many new schools awarded for 21st Century.
One of the top grant writers.
So, you know, for that one. This is another one, there were eight awards in the state for a co-degree engagement grant. This is for dropout prevention, and it gives North Hardin $50,000 to hire a couple of part-time, you know, most likely, I'm not sure who they've hired, retired teachers, but certified instructors to give some tutoring. So, students are limited in the number of hours that they're able to have direct instruction, and so this allows them to have some tutoring, and it also supplies some mental health supports for those students, which we know are very important right now.
We also wrote for an adaptive technology grant through Dow last year, and that was for EC3, and it turned out really well to help buy some technology equipment. They use 3D printers to develop and engineer adaptive equipment for citizens in Hardin County. We also received this fall a connectivity grant through Dow. That grant helps pay for internet access where people can't afford it. We also applied to the Lizbethown Block Grant and received monies for Chromebooks.
Question on the connectivity one, that's for people that have students in our system, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Hardin County students who do not have internet access, and so they would, we partnered with, I think it was Spectrum and Bluegrass to get discounted rates and also free hot spots in Chromebooks.
That's fantastic.
And so, we're going to finish up with some career tech ed applications. As you probably know, career tech ed is an expensive, expensive thing to run. And so, John Harden Hydroponics, they received, first, we started with a smaller FFA grant, and then they were one of two grants in the state that got the innovation award. And they're just doing great things, the technology that we were able to purchase for their hydroponic learning was very, very impressive, just leading in the field as far as student instruction with hydroponics. And then residential maintenance, you know, we're always grateful when we have people in the community who come to us and say, "Hey, do you know about this grant?" And that's exactly what Lincoln Trail Home Builders did. They said, "You know, we want to make sure you know about this grant from the Home Builders Association." They partnered with Home Divo. So, we had $13,000 of curriculum and training given to us, and in addition to that, Home Divo is sending us a gift card and giving instructors some tools, and that actually spurred the, you may have seen in the paper, the Heart of Kentucky Realty Association. They said, "We would like to give you a grant, and we'd like to talk to our state association about matching our grant." And so, we've been very blessed that this, here, this is a brand-new pathway for us, and we've had some incoming funds.
Excellent.
We didn't want to, we hope we haven't given you too much information, that wasn't too much grant story, but it does really highlight a lot of different things all across the district.
Talk about the grand total.
Well, they don't like to brag. I talked to them, I said, "I hate this."
Please do. Please do that. Don't let us know what that number is.
I don't know, but as you can see, we are, we have some grants that are pending, and we steadily work at it, so.
So, we pulled in over $1 million already and hope to have quite a bit more.
This is how much time? How much time have you done this in?
Well, we started in August, and so we kind of...
Of 19.
...got rolling around September.
Yeah.
You know, 14 months.
Yep. I have a question. I'm involved in contracting a lot. What is your P win? You're not losing many. That means you're really targeting these, right?
When you're applying for...
Well, I think we know the district, that's the thing. We know the schools, we know, we've talked, we went out when we first began and talked to different schools and said, "You know, how can we help you? Let us know, we've been reaching out to the schools." So, it's just not writing blindly, like, "Oh, yeah, remember, we need to do, you know, this school was looking for that."
Well, the usual ratio is about 20%. You guys are way, way beyond that.
We're doing, yeah, we're doing better than the average bear right now.
Well, you stole my thought there. I was going to talk about their relationships in schools. No, I just wanted you to see, the principals now are seeing their success rate, and they're saying, "Let's reach out, reach out to them and let them help our schools." And that's something that doesn't come out of our general budget or title funds. So, I just appreciate the impact they're having on students, and you see how many programs they're getting for our district, so thank them.
And one other important thing to me, a lot of times, grants can be structured like a drug deal where the first one's free. None of these really are. This is all, you get it, you keep it, it's yours.
A lot of these weren't matching grants where we had to put forth half the money either, so that was...
Yeah, it's just amazing. This is really good work.
This is free.
Fantastic.
Thank you so much. How are we made aware of grants that's available out there?
We work through Greck. Greck sends us a list. I also have a listserv that I look for, and so does Susan, and then we're always watching KDE's website when they have our competitive grants.
And that is something to note, you know, a lot of our private corporations, we've been going to their site, places we check annually, and some of those sites, they've pulled back funding due to COVID. Private foundations are designating a lot of their, you know, their funding towards the community, they're designating it to COVID relief. So, there's not as many private, private grants out there to write for. We're busy right now with federal grants, but any grants that, if you run across an opportunity, we'd be very happy to receive those, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're up to construction updates and alliance. In JRA, we met with those folks at noon, and Lincoln Trail is really nearing completion, finally. I think the punch list has worked out pretty well, and we're just really looking forward to that one being turned over to us. And the east is still a little behind, it's going to stay behind. We've got bad weather coming, and still don't have some roof on part of the building, but they'll get there. Everyone's had the same problems we've had, they've not been wearing masks because they were drywalling, it was because they had to, so. For other reasons, so. We're getting there, and we're still looking at the Central Hardin renovation program. We're working on into that. A lot of paperwork to get done with Frankfurt KDE and so forth, and John is expecting some replies from them before too long. Probably the first time you'll see out at that site will be some geothermal work, and we had discussion there today, limited space, we don't own any more land, so we're going to work over one of our ball fields and put geothermal under it, and then try to get it back together for the 21 seasons, believe it or not, which won't be too far off, so. Whole lot going on in the construction. It is what it is, everyone's slowed down, so we would have liked to have them open, and we don't, but worse than that, we'd like to have our kids back in school, traditionally. And so, we would take the old school, if we just get them back traditionally right now and be happy. All right, and on the consent agenda, anyone that has anything they want to talk about or remove or...
Can we hear about the apprenticeship? That's A1.
Yes, sir. So, as you may recall, Ms. Slaven came and spoke to you all at the last board meeting.
Yes.
And we also discussed it at the noon board meeting about the apprenticeships, and we were asking people in the community to allow our students to come and get those experiences. Mr. Wise will always have co-op students and apprenticeships at his business. We have students working as, for certified public accountants. We have some of our students in our automotive program at EC3 to go to Swope. And what we found is we were, I hate to use this word, but we were being hypocrites within the Hardin County school system because we realized that we have a child nutrition, we have a transportation department, we have business within our district office, finance department. So, what we have done is, we are asking the board to allot over the next three years $150,000 maximum cost to pay for our students to be interns within our school district. So, when we have IT informational technology students, we could hire them to help work on the computers and actually troubleshoot for our teachers. Also, we were losing some of the best mechanics because they were trained under Mr. Pitt at EC3, and they were going to work for Swope, and we need mechanics at our transportation department. So, we're hoping by having the internships and apprenticeships at those locations, they have an emotional connection to us, and they will stay and continue to work for us because of those apprenticeships. Ms. Slaven is also working for one, for us to be our own pipeline for teachers. We have teachers out here in the community to, or in our board audience tonight, but we want to encourage our students to become educators and come back and work for us. So, we also have the early learning academy with our students, so students who want, older students who want to go into preschool, we can start having them to serve in those internship programs within our district. There are programs that require so many hours of interning before they can get that certification, and that's what we want them to do within the Hardin County schools. It is difficult to say, "Hey, come work for us for free," when you have Swope willing to pay them. And as a high school student, you know you're trying to get your own personal vehicle, pay your own insurance, and those type things. So, Mr. Segal, that's what we are hoping to...
Thank you.
It is a way to grow our own program, and then also not asking more of the community than what we expect of ourselves.
Yeah, it's great. I had a call this morning, low after 7:00, and one of the students that was co-op for us, he told me he was making $28 an hour. He left us two years ago, he had like 50 abstinence from school, was on the verge of leaving. And I told him, he would show up at our shop at 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning to go to work, and I said, "What are you doing here?" "Well, I don't know." I said, "You're going to school, or you're not working today, that's the way it is." And he did graduate, and it just makes you feel good, you know, to know that kid is, he changed pills, he's in HBAC, and told me he spent $28 an hour, and I couldn't be more proud.
Excellent. Just two years out of school now?
Yeah. Yeah, he's out of school. He's, this is his second year out.
That's good.
Doing great. But he was one of those students... Doing great. But he was one of those students sat on the border.
Yep.
You know, he didn't really.
It could have been a failure story.
Didn't have college in mind, but he's, he's got a good living, good income.
Good.
Now, and I should say, that's the other point of these apprenticeships. We don't just want our students to be transition-ready. We want them to be employed, but it's more important that they're employed with a living wage when they go out on their own. And that's what we want for them.
Excellent. Okay. Anything else anyone want there?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say something about 9C4.
Okay.
We are getting ready to approve a 1%, isn't that right? 1% cost of living payment, a one-time payment for our staff members, because we did not have enough in the budget to give them a raise on their salary schedule. I think this is an attempt just to do something for our teachers and other staff. We know how hard you're working, and we appreciate it so much. And we wish we could do better, but this one-time payment will be on their December checks. And just know that this board is very much aware of how hard you're working and how difficult this year and part of last year has been for you. And we just appreciate you.
Yeah, don't leave us now.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's something that we all wish we could do more and hope that this shows the appreciation that we have. We know that there has been a lot of hard work, a lot of constantly moving changes and such. I mean, I, I have a child going through it, so I mean, I see what her teachers are putting in and what they're doing and the, the improvement from March till now and how much everybody's learned and grown with all of it. So we, we know it's a stressful time for everybody and really appreciate all the hard work that's going into it.
If there's one thing COVID, one thing positive COVID has done, I think it's given parents a whole new appreciation for what teachers do.
For what teachers do. Absolutely.
And I think that they have come to really respect and admire teachers for the hard work.
And I want to add too that we have bus drivers and monitors going in and assisting our primary teachers in the classroom right now, doing Google meets with our students, doing sight words, fluency, math facts, just trying to give them some of that one-on-one attention. Right now, our drivers aren't working. We also have our child nutrition workers helping in classrooms. We have transportation people working at Feeding America, because right now they're not allowed to have volunteers in. So while we were shut down, we immediately called them and said, how can we be of benefit to you and the community? We have another group helping our homeless liaison person organize some things that our families will need when they get a home. So it is just remarkable what everyone within this district has done to contribute to the success.
Lot more to it than just classroom instruction.
Yes, absolutely.
And this is for all of our full-time employees. It's not, not just teachers.
Yes.
It's our budget is up 80-plus percent of it goes to salaries, so it's, it's, 1% is a pretty big number, somewhat over $900,000. But John Stiff assured us today that we would be okay for this one-time cost of living help and.
If it doesn't work, we're taking it out of his pay.
Yeah. John, you've got a lot of years to work with.
Yeah, you're right, John. So do we, do we need to change this in the agenda, or just record it differently?
We will record it differently.
Okay.
Thank you. And I apologize. That's my fault. We came back from the noon board meeting, and I was called into a couple other meetings, and sorry about that, Casey.
So we, so we blame you?
Yes, sir.
We've got a separate motion on it here, but we want to go ahead and just change it to the 1% and leave it in the consent agenda.
We can, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. That'll be 1% there instead of the half.
All right.
Okay.
I think we might point out that another item on the consent agenda pretty much launches the Central Hardin renovation project and gets us formally starting that. So that's good news.
C7, yeah.
And we're approving some things on here that may not happen. We're, we're looking ahead for some school trips and so forth, but I guess it's everyone's well aware of now. Sports activities beyond the, this week's football is pretty much over for this coming year. And one of those things that we hated to do or hated to talk about, but it is a fact. We all think education comes first and sports second on this board, I think.
Yep.
I know we do. So that was kind of a tough situation to address, but you know, if, if we're not allowing our students to participate in school, I feel like we'd be totally wrong for allowing them to participate in sports. So we got started off in school, and we tried football, and we had a few minor sports go along, but as of right now, we're, we're stopping all sports until.
For a time there, we believed we'd be back in school.
We did.
And now we know that's not the case.
Well, the key to this whole thing is to get this coronavirus under control.
Yeah.
And I think everybody needs to do what the CDC and the doctors are telling us to do to get this, we've got to get it under control if we're ever going to have normal school again.
Fortunately, I've had a lot of positive comments that people, parents said they thought their students were safer in the school because we had more control over them. They abided by the rules.
Yes.
But it's coming from the outside. We weren't hit really that hard with students. But where we get hit hard is when it gets outside and it gets into families, gets into our staff. We, 300-plus people on the quarantine.
Yeah.
Are sickness. So we had no choice but to go with what we're doing, and hopefully things will improve. These holidays are hard on us. Fall break, trick-or-treat, Thanksgiving, Christmas, we're, we're loaded with something all the time.
Election break, election break costs.
So hopefully we'll get things back on track. All right. So no other discussion. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And action items, if we get anything that we needed to recover. The Warren mayor just changed the 1%. New business? Do you want to have any new business? No new business? Superintendent's report?
I apologize, Chairman.
Five minutes?
Yes. It says an update on the Hardin County School Strategic Plan. I'm sorry, that is meant for December, and that's my second error within the last 30 minutes.
You're a month ahead.
Casey?
I skipped Mr. Sutton, so we're even there.
I appreciate you doing that for my benefit. I do just want to let our parents know, we have really worked hard for this NTI to make it different. We were very reactive in March because we were given two days' notice about going with NTI. We shut down for six weeks, and then it turned out to be for the rest of the school year. But our instructional services department has worked incredibly hard, but so has all of the other staff. With this comes a lot of stress on our families. It is a lot of stress on our teachers and everyone else in here. So part of a grant from KDE was a grant for a mental health professional. We have hired that person. It was a young lady by the name of Sarah Murphy. And that person is available to families at all times. And what I really want to stress to our families who may be viewing this this evening is the awareness you need to have that if you are needing support, please reach out to your child's teacher, to your child's administration, and to your child's counselors. There are services available to support families, but it is very difficult to be on a screen that looks like for the older people in the room, the Brady Bunch, to pick out those students who are struggling with mental health, or for us as administrators to pick out the teachers and bus drivers who are struggling with mental well-being. So please reach out and acquire those services and communicate with your school so that we can provide you with assistance that we know is available. But again, it takes people reaching out to us to let us know that because it's very difficult to tell that on a screen. The next thing I want you to know is we have never been through a pandemic before. Some of you may remember Nanette Johnston, former superintendent. About a month ago, I called her and I said, I've been going through all of your files. You were superintendent for over 10 years. I'm really looking for the one how to get out of a pandemic. Funny enough, she didn't have any answers for me on that. So this is new, so I just ask our families for their patience and understanding, but also communicate with us to let us know how we can help you. The next thing, we completed our district facilities plan with our local planning committee. One of the items on there was to, because of the low numbers at our schools out in the county at Creekside, Lakewood, and Sicilia Valley, the local planning committee recommended that you all change Sicilia Valley Elementary to West Hardin Middle School. And my recommendation would be that that not take place this next school year for the '21-'22 school year, that we leave things as they are currently, and take a look at that possibly for the '21-'22 school, I'm sorry, '22-'23 school year. I don't think that this is the year to make those changes for families. We need to know how many students we have in those buildings. We need to know where the district lines need to be moved. And right now, with our families up in there, I just don't believe this is the right time. It doesn't take board action, but we have that on the district facilities plan. What I would ask is that that item not be moved to the top. We're working on Central Hardin, and so again, it's not requiring any action. We would just like for you, I would like for you all just to put that on hold for the future year.
Good idea.
Point of clarification, the, as I understand it, the, the committee's plan has gone up to KDE, and they still have to say it's acceptable to them, and that hasn't happened yet, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. But even so, there's no action required for us?
That is correct. You all have passed it, and they'll look through it. But again, I feel it's important for us to let the community know that we are not looking at that, because I know there's families going, are you going to change my bus route next year? Is my bus driver going to change? The teachers are saying, am I going to be moved to a new school next year? Cafeteria managers are saying, who, who's going to be in this position next year? So they just deserve to know that their life as they know it at this moment will stay the same for as much as possible during the '21-'22 school year.
Undoubtedly, some bus routes have changed, but not.
Yes.
Not what school that bus is going to.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's, that's kind of what I thought were.
So Chairman, that is all I have.
Okay. We had a small executive session today, and I don't think we need to have one tonight, do we?
No, sir.
All right. Board calendar, November 25th, school dismissed. November 26th, Thanksgiving Day, and all offices will be closed. Also, the 27th, and then we'll be back here December to 17th. That'll be like a few days before Christmas.
That's my sister's birthday.
We appreciate y'all coming out tonight. It's, these young ladies, hopefully they will all be teachers for us, as you said, one day. And I'm sure some of these meetings are sort of boring, but.
Even the gentleman in the back.
Part of their assignment. And a gentleman back there in the corner.
Yes.
He was heading back there.
We're always looking for subs, Chairman.
Looks nice though. I mean, he's a turkey. He's, he's, he's ready to go. He's ready.
Yes. I'm not sure if you heard Mr. Stiff, but we are always looking for substitute teachers. So you just stay a little bit, and we'll tell you how to apply for those jobs. Many of you already are subbing, so we appreciate that.
We appreciate you being here.
You ready for a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Don't move.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Y'all have safety at home. Thanks for coming.